Hello, welcome to the Select Board Meeting for November 27, 2023. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge leaders.
Pledge leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everybody. We're going to do open forum first, so I will do open forum. And if anybody is here on the heavy traffic, heavy truck exclusion, we're not doing that as part of open forum. We're actually doing that separately as an appointment, so you don't have to talk on that. But I know we have at least one person for open forum, so come on down.
Hi there. My name's Patrick McKenna. I'm here on behalf of Phil Wolf and the East Bridgewater Fire Department to talk a little bit about Toys for Tots. This is a program we've done for the last 13 years. It's been wildly successful. We've helped a lot of our town residents and a lot of people be able to get an additional presence or help them have an enjoyable Christmas and holiday season. We're doing this again, and we're hoping that we can continue to get town resident support. We've gotten a ton in the past, and if people are looking to donate and participate, we are accepting unwrapped new gifts as well as gift cards. Gift cards generally help us tailor specific presents to people that need it, so those are actually extremely useful, as well as just cash donations we accept, and we will get presents to people who need it. If you're, if people are looking to participate, we provide gifts and assistance to children from when they're born to 17 years old, and they can drop off gifts at many of the public buildings, including the library, the community center, town hall, the fire department, as well as at the YMCA. And if there's any other questions, or if people have any questions or concerns, or anybody that they know might, might benefit, they can contact Phil Wolf at the Fire Department, and our phone number is 508-378-2071 and extension two talks to anybody who's at the station. So if there's any other questions.
Questions?
No. Thanks for continuing.
For doing it, it's a great program. We appreciate you coming in.
No problem. Thanks for having me.
Spreading the word.
Absolutely.
All right. Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Patrick.
Yes, yes, sir.
Is anyone else here for open forum? All right, then we will close open forum, and we will go right to our appointments with first Plymouth County retirement discussion. So our friends from Plymouth County retirement are here.
Thank you, thank you. Let me do some introductions, then I have some handouts.
Perfect.
And we'll go into our presentation. By way of introduction, for those I don't know, I'm Tom O'Brien. I'm the Plymouth County Treasurer, but I'm also the Chairman of the Board for the Plymouth County Retirement Association. I'm thrilled to be joined this evening with our new Executive Director, Porey Leiden. Guess not that new. We hired Porey in the spring. He brings a wealth of talent. I'm going to allow him just to introduce himself briefly.
Good, good evening. Thank you for the, for the invitation and the welcome. As Tom said, I started at the Retirement Board in May of this year after being a decade in Boston Retirement Board in the Suffolk County DA's office, as well as private practice. So any question you have on retirement issues, we're all, we're there, nine to five every day, and we're welcome any kind of question that you have. Thank you.
Do you want to ask how our retirement's going?
I see it. You see that big check on the end?
Madam Chair, it's okay, I have some handouts. Do you want me to bring them to you individually, or?
Yeah, that's fine. Whatever you want to do, Tom.
Great.
You're welcome.
The good news is I made copies for everyone.
That's the good news?
Well, it is for us.
Thank you.
Good news comes with bad news.
Yeah, I'm sure. The hammer will drop.
We can talk about it all, answer all your questions.
Thank you.
And we'll have extra copies if anybody wants them afterward.
Great.
No presentation about the Retirement Association would be complete without a brief update as to how we're doing, and we're doing very well. You couldn't have asked us to come in at a better time. We recently had our report that was due into our administrative agency, PARAC, and you'll see in the packet that I gave you on the top is Plymouth County. So if you want a quick overview of the Plymouth County Retirement Association, you have it right here. You have the list of all the board members, you have our data points. They were even good enough to make sure that Porey's name is listed here already. I was impressed they did that so quickly.
And spelled right.
And it's even spelled right, which is a bonus. There's a copy for you. And across the top, you can see that we have $1.3 billion in assets under management. I do point out that in 2022, we had a negative 6.68% return, but if you recall, 2022 was a very tough year, and that is actually a remarkable return. In fact, it's so remarkable that of the 104 systems in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we were the third best performing of the, all of the systems in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for 2022. Other data points here, you can look at at your leisure. I wanted to point out, though, one of the important ones, and we'll have this discussion, is when we will be fully funded. And I draw your eye to the right-hand side of the page to note that we will be fully funded in 2029. Now, what I included as part of the packet, or other like-sized retirement systems, Norfolk County, you'll see they'll be funded in 2029. Middlesex County, you'll see they'll fund it in 2036. Crystal County, you'll see they'll be funded in 2034. And then Barnstable County, you'll see will be funded in 2037. I would also report that the state is on track to be funded in 2034. What does that mean? What that means is by 2029, the 52-member units of the Plymouth County Retirement Association will have paid off all of its liability and be back down to normal cost, which will result in significant savings to each of our member units and to the town of East Bridgewater. Think of it this way: Your liability to the pension system is like a mortgage on your house. At some point, that mortgage is paid off. We're looking to have that paid off by 2029. You could extend that mortgage out if you wanted to, but if you did, that comes with a significant cost. It might lower the price tag for a year, but it increases the cost significantly in subsequent years. So the Board and I and the team are very thrilled that we've been able to hold the line, keep aggressively funding the system, so that in 2029, this liability will be paid in full. Then we're going to keep trying to stay on that track. The advantage, however, of being also funded on such a rigorous schedule is if the economy does take a downturn and we suffer another recession or depression, we have the ability to extend out the funding schedule, which will ease some of the pressure if that happens. We're hoping it doesn't. We're hoping we can stay the line, continue to perform as we have historically. I also just wanted to point your attention to the other document that I handed out, the one-page document which shows the Plymouth County Retirement Association versus PRET. As you know, PRET is the state system, and many of the 104 systems are in PRET. We're one of only a few that doesn't have any of our investments with PRET. Part of our theory is if we were at PRET, why do they need us? And we believe that we can actually do a little bit of a better job than they have, and you'll see from this that at certain points in time, we have. This is as of June 2023. It was the final numbers that we had available, and you'll see that, for instance, in the recent month ended June 2023, we had outperformed PRET, the state system, which has more than $96 billion in assets under management, we'd outperformed them by 56 basis points. You'll see that we were a little behind on the calendar year, but from a one-year, three-year, and I know the five-year number isn't there, but on a one-year, three-year, five-year number, we've outperformed the state. So a sign that we're doing a pretty good job here in little old Plymouth County, and we're pretty pleased with our performance. Last document I handed out to you, and I thank Porey for bringing it along, is just a report from our consultant, Makita. We get these on a monthly basis. This is as of September 30, and I just wanted to draw your attention to the last line of the first row, if you will, where it says, "The Metrics: Public Database Ranking Net Rank." And you'll see, if you're looking at the right line, as of September 30, 2022, the That is the percentile we are in across the country. Let me repeat that. That is the percentile your Plymouth County Retirement Association is across the country. So on a one-month basis, we're in the top 4%. On a quarter basis, top 3%. On a one-year basis, top 3%, and we're really proud of the three-year number. We're in the top 2% of all public pension systems in the country. And you can see that we've been getting better. Porey takes all the credit for the last six months, but the Board takes the credit for the time before that. We're on track to continue to exceed expectations. We continue to deliver, and importantly, we continue to be a member-centric board. And what I mean by that is the members that we service, we take our job very seriously and provide them with best service possible. I hope as you've had members of your community retire, you hear only good things about the Plymouth County Retirement Association. We strive to not just be the best when it comes to investment performance, but when it comes to servicing our members. We take that very seriously. The point I think we're here to discuss, and one of the issues that you wanted us to touch base on, and we'll open up for questions, is the assessment. You folks know what your assessment is going to be for the next year. It's a, an increase, and those are always difficult and challenging. The reason I highlighted when we will be fully funded is, you can see, why we're on an aggressive schedule, and we just ask that we continue to stick with that program to make sure we hit our goals and our benchmarks. I had a little cheat sheet about East Bridgewater's increases, but they're averaging about 89% each year. However, once we get to 2029, that drops precipitously. So we realize that they are hard to deal with in a budget. We know that you have lots of demands, but believe we have a good game plan in place and really have success in mind for the future. So I could talk ad nauseam about this. I was sensitive to the time schedule because, while I appreciate the fact you scheduled me for two in a row, which I am very grateful for, the people behind me are other people that I work with, and I can't keep them waiting. So at this point, Porey, is there anything you wanted to add?
No. Thank you.
Okay. Did you have questions? I mean, we asked them to come in to sort of, I don't know. Do you guys want to start? Charlie, do you want to start?
Well, I mean, I just would be repeating what you've said before in that, and Tom, you're right, I mean, it is challenging. That's the thing, is that the increases that, you know, obviously, there's a lot of numbers in flux. So anything that's discussed as to what our assessment might be two or three years from now is highly dependent on a number of factors, not just the market, but how many employees we have, what pay raises we're having. There are a lot of factors in that. But what it looks like is that our annual increase is going to be using up most, if not all, of our new growth every year from Proposition Two and a Half. I mean, doesn't, we have the 2.5% increase, and that, you know, we'll be able to fund other things with, but the annual increase due to new growth, new buildings and such, will amount to what we're paying New Law as an increase, which obviously then means that that money's not available for other uses, and that's the challenge that the select, the Board Select, I'm sorry, these days, Select Board and the Finance Committee and Town Meeting are going to be facing. Obviously, as you point out, there is that light at the end of the tunnel. I mean, we're going to drop, what, 95% from fiscal '29 to fiscal '30. I don't necessarily expect to be here for that. It'll be an interesting time, not just for us, obviously, but for all the member units, because suddenly, there'll be an influx of money available for all those other uses that we've been delaying, whether it's capital, whether it's OPEB, whether it's operating budget. And I think there'll be some very vibrant discussions in all those communities as to how best to use that money. But the struggle for us is getting there, in that, as you point out, we have a lot of other needs besides retirement, and there's a concern of how much belt tightening we're going to need to do during these next five years. Am I have that about right?
I think that's, yeah. Questions?
No, I just, again, looking at, looking at Plymouth County, then looking at East Bridgewater very selfishly, you know, and I know it's very difficult to project for next year.
Well, next year, we know. At least for them, that's a knowable number.
But right after that, okay, we have projects going all over the place. You know, are we going to hit some kind of a, you know, hitting the road, especially when we look at some of the major projects we have going on here? Are we going to hit a block later that's going to, because of, we don't know what's going to happen, that the increase in what we expect some of these costs to be are going to increase, and where is that going to put the town of East Bridgewater? And I think that's what the Board was looking at when we said, you know, we understand this, we really do. We also understand if we extend this, it's like extending your mortgage, we understand that, but trying to get across to the people that things aren't going to be tight for the next four or five years, it's that simple.
Well, and I do appreciate you having us in, because I think that's the decision. As we talk about this, whether it's with Boards of Selectmen, or Finance Committees, or residents, invariably, as we discuss the options, they come to the conclusion that we should continue to stay on the course we're on. We know it's a difficult path, but if we can get to that 2029 date, there's really a lot of reward there at the end. However, we understand, and this is the value of us being local, you know you can pick up the phone and call us. Charlie was good enough to reach out to us, and here we are. And so if the town faces some real serious problem in 2027, 2028, Porey will be here, and we're happy to come in and talk about this. We have some flexibility, but right now, at this point in time, it really makes sense to stay the course, do what we're doing. We meet with our Treasurers on a regular basis. We had them in recently in, I think it was March. We're due to have them again in December. We present all this information to them, and I think they're of a uniform accord to stay the course that, what we're doing and how we go. The only other thing I'll make is Plymouth County, and I'm very proud of this, we were one of the first to adopt a discount if you prepay, and so we offer a discount of a little bit more than 1% if you prepay. Right now, law, the law allows you to pay twice a year, but if you pay everything in July, you get a bit of a discount to the town of East Bridgewater. That's, you know, a little bit, about $70,000.
And we take advantage of that.
So other systems have now adopted that, but we do whatever we can to, to help you guys deal with some of the challenges. If you feel you want us to come in front of an advisory board or a Finance Committee, we're more than happy to do that.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, look, if you've been watching what's going on in East Bridgewater the last couple of years, we've had some, some major changes. You know, you look at some of the Treasure Collector, our Assessor Office, I mean, we've done things that we brought people in. That financial team is stronger than I think than it's ever been in a long time. So I have the faith with Charlie's guidance and with the team that we have in place that we'll, we'll be fine, and we'll find a way to get through this. You know, it doesn't come as a-
Bit of a shock, sure.
You know, but I mean, I mean, every team, every town in the Plymouth County is looking at it the same way we are. Our difference is, and, you know, I continue to, when I do talk about what we've been doing here in town and what this Board has done to push our agendas forward, you know, we've got, we've got a lot of work in front of us to continue growing the town, you know, our connection with the city of Brockton, and our two, you know, major awards, federal as well as state, that we've been granted, is going to give us, I think, a head start on, on developing some infrastructure that will help us over that course of the next five years. So, you know, good news, bad news, like you just said, right? I mean, it's bad news that we have to put ourselves in this and have our departments work together to, you know, to take care of this note, so to speak, but the good news is I think we have, at least East Bridgewater, I can't speak for the surrounding towns, but I think we have the team, the people in the place, and, and the goals that we have set forth to, to make it work all at the end of the day, so.
Yeah, and we really value that partnership. We talk to your team on a regular basis, whether it's the Retirement Board or through the county in the year. We have some solutions coming through the county as well to help the town whenever we can. So it's a valuable partnership. It's the value of local government, it's the value of regional government, and we're happy to be here anytime.
Good. Well, we appreciate you coming in to explain it, especially not for us, but for the people who are millions of fans who watch our meetings, so that there's an understanding in the community.
Is this Ratings Week again?
I think it is Ratings Week. So that, you know, if we're coming and we're saying we have some tough decisions to make with the budget, they understand, you know, part of where that's coming from, so.
Well, and that's why we do encourage the invite, and we're glad, because we can explain it and say, here's what they're dealing with.
And we can just blame you.
And I have broad shoulders. But I do believe that collectively, we're making some very good decisions here that will pay off both in the short term and the long term.
Well, as a future Plymouth County retiree, I appreciate what you're doing to protect my interests.
You're particularly pleased with the performance.
Yes, I am.
You're too young.
Three more years. Anyway, I didn't really say that on camera. Take that back. Okay, are we set with that? All right, then we will move on to your other hat, Mr. O'Brien.
Yes. Allow me to introduce the next wonderful team that we have. With their permission, I'm just going to state-
This is a much more fun.
Yes. The last one was fun, too. I, I really enjoy the opportunity to go out and talk about what we're doing. You know, we're this relatively small, mid-sized pension system, outperforming very big systems, and we don't get to spread that news very often, so we welcome that opportunity. Oh, we're all going to, okay, then we're going to sneak.
You don't have to sneak.
Well, I was just trying to do it. We have two chairs.
Can we bring up some more chairs?
You can bring up some more chairs if you'd like, or they can hover behind you.
We're all telling you.
Well, we can, I'll start, and then we can-
Sure.
-rotate in and out. We're here on behalf of Plymouth County with a ARPA check presentation to the town of East Bridgewater. I tell you what, we're very pleased with this program. You're going to hear from our team, there's a lot I want to say, but I know that they want to make some good points. I'm just going to simply say that we, we very much value the partnerships that we've developed at the federal level, at the state level, and at the local level. We have a great team working together to bring this program forward. I want to talk a little bit about this particular grant, but I do want to afford people an opportunity to say a few things before we talk about the actual check about the program, in deference to the fact that our state senator has joined us. I'm going to certainly allow him to kick it off. I'll switch seats with him if he wants to be right in front of the microphone. But as I talk about our state partnerships, you know, we're very lucky to have our U.S. Senators, Markey and Warren, our U.S. reps and the team that we have, but we're really pleased with the team at the State House with Senator Brady, Representative Sullivan, working with us collaboratively to make these things happen. Without their support of the county and the things we're doing, we can't be here with this good news. So Senator, did you want to switch and say a few words?
Sure. Thank you, Treasurer. Thank you to the Board for having us here tonight, and, and I will say that when the ARPA money first got announced that it was going to be distributed, there was a lot of talk of who was going to control it, and thank goodness Plymouth County with Treasurer O'Brien and the County Commissioners took control of it, the money coming into Plymouth County, because they got the funding out more expeditiously than any other part of the Commonwealth. The former administration wanted control of it, and we've seen what has happened. It was major delays of getting the money distributed, and thank you to Treasurer O'Brien and the County Commissioners, it's helped out Plymouth County tremendously, all of the city of Brockton, several towns that I represent in Plymouth County and the, and the rest of the county. So I'm just grateful to be a part of that. I was great to be, to be supportive of the county getting the funding, because, as I mentioned, they did a great job getting the funding out very expeditiously, and I'm just honored to be here as your state senator and be a part of the team here, so, thank you.
Great. And you're right, it was a wise decision. We were all a little bit, you know, were we doing the right thing? But boy, has it proven to be the right way to have handled it.
It really has, and I appreciate those comments from Senator Brady. As I sit here with the Commissioners, I'm reminded that Washington DC could learn a lot from Plymouth County. We work together as a bipartisan group to make sure that we're constantly doing the best for our 27 communities. That pays off. We have such a great team, and because of that cohesiveness, we're really delivering for our, our towns. And in fact, if you go outside of Plymouth County, you'll hear other towns saying, boy, we wish our counties or our regions may have done what Plymouth County did. I know the Chairman likes to highlight some of those points, so I'm going to turn it over to him at this point to offer his thoughts, and I'll move the mic a little closer.
Thank you. To you. Thank you, Treasurer. I'm Jared Valanzola, Chairman of the Board, and it's a privilege to be here. You can tell how much we love East Bridgewater. They have all three of us here. This hasn't happened in quite some time, so that goes to demonstrate how much we enjoy being here in East Bridgewater. Senator Brady, we're very grateful, as always, for his support and for him being here, and I know Rep. Sullivan, Almeida, and Representative Cassidy both have prior commitments, they were going to try and be here tonight as well. But they are staunch advocates for these funds. As, as we've worked through both programs, as the Treasurer highlighted with CARES and Senator Brady did as well, you know, there was some consternation, but in the final review of CARES, East Bridgewater received 50% more dollars than like-sized communities outside of East Bridgewater. You received them quicker, and you received, and we did it for less than 1% administrative cost, which is something we're currently tracking in, for ARPA as well, and that means more money for East Bridgewater and for our 27-member communities. As we've been saying often on these check presentations, COVID brought certainly a lot of bad news for a lot of years, and we were glad to just be able to bring a little bit of good news during that barrage. I am grateful to have both Commissioners Wright and Commissioner Hanley with us this evening, but again, you know, the Treasurer said it perfectly, we, we work so well together as a team, and we do it in, in a way that I think demonstrates what good government can look like, and being able to come into your community and continue to bring these funds and continue to be that value-add is really important to us, and we value that relationship. We couldn't do it without Charlie Sealeek and the entire finance team that you have here. We can't do it without you folks as well. So we're really grateful to be here and for the opportunity to continue to partner with East Bridgewater. It's a great presentation by the Retirement Board. As I say, Plymouth County does the unfun stuff of government for the most part. This is one of the fun things we get to do, but who wants to talk about funding schedules? Nobody, but it's really important. Treasurer O'Brien and Porey, darling.
He's a finance nerd.
But it's really, right, but it's really important stuff, right? And it's, and it's, it's stuff that, on top of that, everything else that we do at the county level, I say it's the unfun stuff, but it is very important stuff, and it's, and it's stuff that's going to serve East Bridgewater and our member communities extremely well down the road. So with that, I will hand it to Commissioner Wright.
Thank you. Thank you, Jared, and my team here. Thank you very much for having us in here this evening. It's a pleasure to always come to East Bridgewater, especially where it's only three miles down the way from me, so it's easy for me to get here. I do so appreciate our legislative body and what they've done through the ARPA and through the CARES Act. They've been with us, they've worked with us, and they also realize the value of what we were doing for their communities. I also want to thank Charlie for all his hard work and also his team putting the application in and getting it done properly and out in a very quick manner. I know this program, that you, or the equipment, the playground that you have put together. I thank all of you and anybody who had their hands in it and doing it. Kudos, it's, it's a great program. We understand, we know what also, you know, happened to the kids during the pandemic was very difficult. They, you know, suffered so much and was able to go through so many different crises of isolation and depression and anxiety. So we thank you for putting it again and always remembering the children. I just, you know, am so glad that we're able to be here, and we, I want to say thank you for our Treasurer. He's been a, you know, perfect person in, in doing the funding and, and getting the money out as fast as he can, so thank you very much.
Commissioner Hanley.
Oh, thank you. Never met a microphone. I didn't like, oh, too far, all right. Thank you, thank you. All right. Well, I, I echo the sentiments of my colleagues, and I want to thank you all for your application, because we do see everyone's application. And when you have fiscal problems, fiscal issues, that it comes down to what do you make your investment? You make your investment in paying your mortgage, your, your obligations. But what always gets thrown to the wayside are the things that build the fabric of a community, right? So recreation, what are the, what are the areas that get cut when you have to pay these other bills? And for you to make the choice of putting in a playground is a quality of life issue, and you can see it, it's transparent in this town. When you look at your school system and what you built, okay, you made an investment. That, that is one of the premier campuses I've seen in the whole county, so it comes at a cost, right? So for you to make that investment and then to see what we're going through, all of us, every community, on making these tough decisions, sometimes it comes time to pay the piper.[1745.23] on making these tough decisions, sometimes it comes time to pay the piper. So when you look at it, I don't want people to discount the use of your funds, because there's 27 buckets that you could have put this money into, and then reinvesting into that community spirit is something that is fruitful. I do want to just, if you would allow me, Madam Chair, to bring us back to.
Not Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
Oh. No, I am. I thought he was talking about the chair.
She thought I was talking about her. She wants to be the chair.
He was looking at me.
Just a moment of personal privilege. When it comes to the finances of the county, when I came on board here, there was a $750,000 structural deficit that they didn't tell us about when we were candidates and we got elected, and we had all our ideas.
Funny how after you win, then they go, "Here's all the stuff you didn't know."
Exactly. Exactly. But I have to give it to Tom, credit to him and to our team for realizing that, you know, Plymouth County at the time was close to being closed, if you recall. There was a charter commission that wanted to close the county, and rightly so. There were legacy costs that were left over from the jail and the hospital that you would have had to pay for, okay? And if we didn't have folks like Mr. Brady in the room in our delegation, we would have never been able to pass legislation that allowed us to pay for the obligations of Plymouth County Jail, okay, that you would have had to pay for, that we were able to add to the deeds excise tax to reduce completely. So that was issue number one. Issue number two, when it came down to the finances of your pension obligation that we speak of, was people like Senator Brady, who sponsored our pension obligation bond, which unfortunately didn't make it past the previous governor. Okay, but it was at a time, had they made an investment into Plymouth County with the rates as they were, we could have locked in and saved you even further money. But that's this gentleman right here, and I have to give him the credit. He's very modest, okay? But I was there in the bleak times when we were gonna close this county. And then you look at what we did with CARES and what we've done with ARPA. Okay, Plymouth County is better by having regional government. So I just wanted to bring that out, and I know he doesn't say it, but this is one of the best guys in public service going. So that's my soapbox for tonight.
Don't tell everybody that. We want to keep him.
Yeah, exactly. Goes out in the private sector after he retires, right? But thank you for having us here.
Absolutely.
Tom, good luck with presenting the rest of our thing.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Making me blush a little bit. I did want to echo the sentiments and thank your team, Charlie and the team that he has, your finance department. This application was very creative to have some adaptive playground equipment. It went through our system because they're good at what they do, so we're thrilled to present a check. Didn't know if you wanted to say anything before we come up and actually hand you the check. And we would love to do a little photo op with you as well.
Of course.
With the bigger check, but.
Never missed a photo.
I said, "Brady's here."
I wanted to make sure you didn't have any questions or wanted to talk about ARPA, the ARPA program.
I think that, you know, we're grateful to, you know, receive yet another check from Plymouth County to help us with our stuff. And, you know, playground equipment was kind of a no-brainer for us. We, it's great to see the kids on playgrounds again, and I don't think any of us will ever forget what it looked like when they just weren't there, so. You guys want to add anything?
Again, I just, everything you're saying is correct. Plymouth County is fantastic out there. We have to give a little credit. We have a committee, the ARPA committee, that has spent a year and a half now putting all these presentations and ready for us, timelessly. I didn't think anyone thought it was gonna take this long. And they're still not finished, but a lot of credit to them. They put a lot, a lot of time into this. We appreciate that.
Yeah, and we looked at it the same way that you did. You know, recreation was one of the hottest hits we had, especially through COVID and then after trying to rebuild it. You know, one of the boards that we've worked with, one of the committees we've worked very strongly was our recreational committee. And along with like playground equipment, we just built pickleball courts, put up brand-new basketball courts. I mean, we've done a lot, and we've leaned on.
Outdoor movie.
A little movie theater, yeah. So we've really put a lot of time and effort in doing exactly what you just said, you know, looking at things that get lost in the shuffle of trying to get back to some kind of regular, so to speak, way of life. But it's, and it's worked out really good, and a credit, as David says, credit does go to that ARPA group who took the time to meet with each of the committees. But, you know, those people that sit on those committees as well, I mean, they're volunteers at the end of the day, right? They're not getting paid the big bucks like we are.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's nice to see them step up and really do what they've done, and, you know, the money certainly has changed a lot of a lot of lives, and will continue to do that as these kids grow up. And even, not just kids, I mean, we've got adults down there now playing.
Pickleball.
Pickleball and basketball and whatnot. So it's been great. It's been a nice blessing for the town of East Bridgewater, for sure.
So then, without further ado, we have a check for $49,960 made out to the town of East Bridgewater. We'll present that and then do a quick picture.
When did Peter Stark get the question?
You don't get your check?
What check?
Yeah, we already had one.
This is the real check.
Oh, he's got the big, the big check.
That's the real check.
These documents for seven years.
Seven years, you gotta hold on to those.
I'll stand behind you. No, I don't. I have it right here.
Who's saying the picture?
Who's saying in the future?
I'm gonna read.
Yay, yay, yay.
I'll give you the county phone too.
Don't give them the phone.
It's on TV.
All right, folks, if we can all. Perfect. All right. One, two, three. Perfect.
Great, thank you.
Great, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Coming here to see you again.
Tom, thanks for.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Always hope to see you, my friend.
Made to see you. Best of everyone.
Senator. I shake all the people and get all the things.
Are you doing? Great, we'll do. Thanks. Motion to adjourn.
We'd be tired in front of them. All right. That now brings us to our next appointment, which is a discussion on the proposed heavy truck vehicle exclusion along East Street, Hayward, and High Street in East Bridgewater and Bridgewater. And the reason you're all here, I imagine, because I don't see most of you at our meetings, so. Hello.
Hi.
You're back.
I am back.
How do we want to?
Well, I think if Jeff could, I mean, for the.
You want it? Yep.
You know, a number of people here who they're a little bit familiar, but let's put it back on the record as to why we're here and what we're looking at.
Thank you.
See you again.
Thank you. You as well. For the record, Jeff Bandini, project manager with McMahon Bowman. I'm here on behalf of the town of Bridgewater, who wishes to pursue a heavy vehicle exclusion, heavy vehicle commercial exclusion route along High Street in the town of Bridgewater, which would extend into the town of East Bridgewater as part of the proposed restricted route. We're currently going through with a study that will be submitted to Mastioti on behalf of the town of Bridgewater to pursue this heavy vehicle exclusion. And as part of the, as part of the study, any routes that extend into neighboring communities have to get the approval of said neighboring community, which is partially why I'm here this evening, is to discuss sort of the pros and cons of proposing the heavy vehicle route. So the idea behind presenting the heavy vehicle exclusion is, right now, there's approximately 7% to 10% heavy vehicles along High Street that extend towards East Street and Hayward Street as they kind of come over from Route 106 and cut over to High Street. So the idea being is that the proposed heavy vehicle exclusion would move those vehicles to an alternative route. We're examining two primary routes as part of the heavy vehicle exclusion. One, which would be contained directly within the town of Bridgewater and would not need approval from the town of East Bridgewater. The second would be to propose the heavy vehicle route along Route 106. So that's what we're presenting to you today, to understand the feedback from the board and the public, to understand the ramifications and to get, ultimately, present for your approval this evening or for further discussion.
Okay, great. Questions? All right.
I just want to emphasize one thing, Jeff, is that if the two towns do agree to do a truck exclusion along that route, as much as we've designated an alternate route, it's not as if we're going to have somebody monitoring where those trucks are going. It's, you know, simply because we say you should go down Route 18 to Spring Street and then cross over to 104, does not mean that the truck will do that. The truck might instead go up 106, you know, to Whitman and to Plymouth and take that route. And having talked to John Haynes and talked to Jeff and, you know, we've had this discussion previously with the board, with the track committee and such, to say, let's look at what we think is actually going to happen as opposed to what we would want maybe to happen. And the consensus was that if we do do the truck exclusion along East Street, Hayward, and High, the trucks will more than likely use the Whitman-Plymouth route, rather than go down Route 18 to Spring and then cross over to 104. So the central question for, you know, and I think the reason that everybody's here is to discuss, does it make more sense for the town of East Bridgewater to have the trucks continue going down East Street or coming out of East Street instead of going up via Whitman and Plymouth? Because if we close east to the trucks, they're gonna go somewhere, and they're probably gonna go that way. So it's, and we cannot eliminate the trucks. The trucks will, if we don't do anything, the trucks will continue going down East Street. If we do eliminate East Street as a possible truck route, then they'll go down someplace, and we think it's likely it's gonna be Whitman and Plymouth. Right? Is that all right?
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah. Thanks for explaining that a little bit further.
Right. I will get to it. Don't worry. Okay, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. So I don't know, I know some of you have been at meetings before. We have received emails that we have all read. So, you know, we pretty much, I think, know that the people on East Street want us to vote to to change this and to go forward with, you know, excluding the traffic. But if you have specific things that you want to say, I want to give you the chance to say them, and you seem very eager, so if you would like to go first, you can.
You need to.
But I do need you to just come down. You don't have to move the mic, but you do need to just give us your name and address for the record and.
Hi, my name's Fred Sproul.
Hello.
I've lived in East Bridgewater and the Elmwood area for approximately 55 years. So just a little bit of feedback on the route. So Bridgewater Sand and Gravel, they are the majority of the problem on East Street. They have 18-wheel trucks, trailer.
You really want, one point.
I did read.
No, no, I'm gonna let you continue.
He's gonna tell it, and you should talk to us.
You need it, yeah.
Where the ones are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's gonna redirect your focus.
I appreciate everybody's effort here. I appreciate the board. Anyway. So if you do a quick Google Maps from Bridgewater Sand and Gravel to Route 106, say, the Bridgewater Tavern, it's six and a half miles. It's the quickest route. It's the route that they take you. But that's for a passenger car. It's not for an 18-wheel, you know, on a 16-foot-wide road. Now, Bridgewater Sand and Gravel is located on Route 104. Now, Route 104 runs right into Bridgewater Center, crosses right through at Route 28. It is another direct route out to Route 24 on 106. That's 6.9 miles. It, and Google Maps said it was a two-minute different in time between the two routes. The route that was offered about Plymouth down to Whitman Street is eight miles, and it took four more minutes by Google Maps as of 4:45 PM. So I read the report. I was interested in how some of that was arrived at. And I'd also be interested if anybody's spoken to Bridgewater Sand and Gravel, given them any feedback. So my grandkids cross the street twice a day to go and hit a bus in the Bridgewater development, right across from my street. I'm concerned about it, because when I walk them, often multiple times, trucks will go by in both directions. And it's scary. It's a very narrow road. And up in the Hayward section, there's an actual S curve that's even narrower. Frankly, I'm shocked there hasn't been an accident there. I can really appreciate the Bridgewater folks on High Street, too, because that bridge, that's dangerous for cars to actually navigate, never mind two, 18-wheel trucks. So I will offer more feedback, but I just wanted to respond to what was said prior.
Sure. And I think that report, that was that Old Colony did. That you guys did. So if you have a question about, can you answer his question about the report and how it was determined that you thought that they would use Whitman and Plymouth Street?
So we haven't issued an actual report yet, and that's why we're here, is because if we're gonna pursue Route 106 as an alternative route, we need permission from the town to pursue the full report, which, again, the town will have a chance to review for potential mitigation and things like that, of that nature. But we haven't actually issued anything.
So it's just an assumption?
It's more of a guidance and establishing, as part of the Mastioti regulations, you need to establish an alternate route.
Okay.
And we're examining two alternative routes as part of this exercise, so perhaps that's what, that's in reference.
Does that answer your question? See, I'm a librarian, so I'm always gonna go with the, we need to answer your question.
I think so.
Okay.
Okay.
But I guess that clarifies.
Okay. This is just, at this point, still, we don't know what they might do, but that's sort of what we think they might do. Okay? All right.
I appreciate it.
Other people that wanted to say something or add something? Yes, Mr. Widenfeller, and then Eric, did you want to speak? He'll wait for you to be done.
Yeah. Thank you for holding this meeting. Some of us never thought it would happen. The problem down here has become, over the past couple of years, really intolerable for anybody that lives in the neighborhood. We don't live on the street, but we live in the neighborhood. And the neighborhood has changed. Neighborhoods go through cycles. When we moved in 30 years ago, there were a bunch of little kids in the neighborhood, and it was great. Then when those kids grew up, we didn't have kids. Now we're back, and we've got a bunch of kids in the neighborhood. We've got two or three families that have six kids. Every morning, on the corner of Trudeau Lane and East Street, there's anywhere from, depending on what time of day you get there, there's anywhere from three to five or six kids waiting on the corner for a bus. And those kids are kids. This morning, while they were there, I counted a convoy of five 18-wheel dumps going down the road. And they don't slow down. That road is theirs. When I come out of the post office this morning, there was a truck coming down Route 18, coming down West Street, and they rolled right down West Street. He was doing 35 or 40 miles an hour. Never slowed down for the light. I watched him go through the red light there. And you know what's gonna happen? They hit a car broadside with one of those things. There's been some close calls. Part of the problem, there's a three-phase, as I see it. You've got the university that's publicizing that as a shortcut. You've got the MBTA that's got signs up, trains this way. And then you've got Bridgewater Sand and Gravel that's telling people, telling their drivers, that's the way to go. Bridgewater's got a couple of 200 housing lot developments going on down there. The last, most of the summer, West Bridgewater has been stripping all of this topsoil out of a project they've got going on on Lincoln Street, which is open parallels Route 24. They've taken acre, an acre of topsoil out, and that was coming back the other way. Those trucks were overloaded, every single one of them. They could just barely make it through. The road is not wide enough to handle 18-wheel trucks. When they get down by the cemetery, every one of them comes over that road, and I've got pictures of it. Every one of them comes down that road, is straddling the yellow line in the middle. Cars can't get out of their driveway. They don't care. I know, and we're gonna get in trouble because I'm here tonight, because we've had relatives that live on Whitman Street. We've already heard from her. But it's a problem. We've got a 17th-century sidewalk. We have begged John to do something with that. You cannot walk on that sidewalk without rolling an ankle. Taking it, take it from experience. It can't be done. You've got a couple of houses down there, the sidewalk in front of it, it's like this. You've got tree roots running across the middle of the sidewalk. You can't walk around it, because they're fenced off. You can't walk in the street, because you're gonna get killed. We're asking for something to be done, and Mr. Sealeek says you can't, they're gonna go the other way. If it's enforced, they're gonna stay away. Truck drivers are not looking for trouble. They're making a living, and I understand they're trying to get the shortest route they can. But some consideration has to be to the people that live in this town. We've been giving it all the benefit to West Bridgewater and all of it to Bridgewater. They're making the money on the deal. We're getting nothing but headaches. We've got a sidewalk that's a nightmare, and we talked, we talked to one of our former policemen. And his comment was, "Oh, we're talking about speed limit on East Street." And he said, "Well, the average speed limit in town is 50 miles an hour." I said, "There's free signs on East Street that say 30 miles an hour." He said, "Well, we don't ticket. We want to educate the driver." I can't think of a better education than a 100. I can't think of a better education than a hundred-dollar ticket and nine years on your insurance policy. That'll wake you up in a hurry. Well, let's start taking a proactive measure to this. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Eric? Can you, sorry.
I don't have any comments. Jim did it fine.
And can you just say your name?
Eric Avril, 154 East Street. First, has anybody official tried to meet with Bridgewater Sand and Gravel that worked this out?
That would be a Bridgewater question since they're not in-
Has there been any contact?
I believe we're working on behalf of the town of Bridgewater, so I'm not sure to what extent those discussions have been had, but I can only consider that the town may have reached out to the Sand and Gravel as part of this discussion.
So you don't, you don't know?
I'm not sure.
And-
You could call their select board and ask, or they have a-
Well, wouldn't that be a logical thing to do, is to call them in? Why aren't they here tonight?
Well, again, they're in Bridgewater, and we're East Bridgewater, we don't really have any authority over the town.
Okay, so, so I-
That would be a Bridgewater.
I guess I need to know the procedure here. What is the procedure?
So with truck exclusion, if the alternate route is gonna go through two communities rather than just one, and the alternate route that we think is gonna actually occur is gonna be Whitman to Plymouth, and then that way, both towns need to say yes.
Right.
If we leave things alone, if east still can be used by trucks, no approvals or not, it's the status quo. If you move the truck route so that it goes through a community, that community has to say yes. Since the alternate truck route we think is gonna occur, in the sense of, we can designate a route, but the, but we really think it's gonna, we're-
Why don't we ask them?
Well, they're working on it.
PRS.
Well-
Well, it's not just about them at all.
But we're, we're not, the town of East Bridgewater is not proposing this.
Right.
The town of Bridgewater, through its consultant, has come to us to say, what are your thoughts about doing this?
So Bridgewater can't say, we want a truck exclusion because it's gonna impact us.
Yes.
We have to agree to, to support that.
Yes.
So we're trying to work with Bridgewater because it impacts East Bridgewater, but in terms of the businesses in Bridgewater, that's not our permit. We don't have it.
I would, I would hope that they-
They don't pay taxes to us.
But that's, that's a matter between the Bridgewater businesses that might be affected and the Town Council in Bridgewater.
So what is the procedure if everybody says, yes, we want an exclusion?
So-
Then what happens?
Okay, so they, they'll, they actually have to do an actual report. There's traffic counts, counts of trucks, speed of the trucks, everything else goes in. It gets, it gets reviewed, it gets approved by both towns, and it gets sent up to Mastot, Massachusetts Department of Transportation.
When you say both towns, does that mean we have to vote on it at a town meeting?
No.
No, no, just us.
Here. Town Council, I would assume, over in Bridgewater, which would be the equivalent. That then goes to Massachusetts Department of Transportation, and they give a thumbs up or they give a thumbs down.
What's the timeline of that?
Because we, we actually already went through this procedure with Codde Street, because there were trucks using that to bypass the intersection at West East and Route 18. I think that was three or four months ago, and we're still waiting to get a decision back from them. So it's months, it's not weeks.
This is government, it moves, how slow, Peter? So even, even if we vote tonight and do this, it's still gonna be, because then it's gonna go back to you, and then you guys have to do your thing, and then it's gonna go to the state. So you're not gonna see an end to this, you know, next week. It's gonna be, but it's moving in-
So the routes that are, that you think they may take are all in Bridgewater and East Bridgewater?
Right.
Okay. So what do you need us to do to be more proactive for us?
Your feedback is-
Right. Tell us that-
Just verbal feedback?
Yep.
I mean, you, so you're-
This is the best thing you can do.
You're here to, to tell the board your thoughts.
Right.
Well, we all have the same thoughts back.
There may be a few-
We're kinda getting that impression.
There may be a few people on Whitman and Plymouth who might feel differently.
Well, is this gonna have to go through Whitman then?
No, Whitman Street.
No, Whitman Street.
Street, I think, right?
Yes, I see. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Jim?
Mr. Seelick mentioned that we have to get the approval of the other town. When did Whit, when did Bridgewater or West Bridgewater come to East Bridgewater and ask for our approval on using East Street?
They didn't.
They don't need approval to use this street.
They have, we have to give them-
No, okay.
If we wanted exclusion, Jim, we would have to work, and then we would have to-
Right, yes.
They don't need permission to drive on a public road.
If West Bridgewater, for instance, had decided they had a, a road that they wanted to have a truck exclusion for-
I understand what you're saying.
And that, and the alternate route went through East Bridgewater, they would need our approval. But you'd have to point at something that they asked for to have a truck exclusion on a road, and we'd look at the report and say, well, where's the alternate route? The alternate route did go through East Bridgewater, as it is, Mastot would have checked with us anyway, so it would have had to come back to us anyway.
Right.
Whitman has two big signs coming down Route 18, no trucks allowed on Washington Street.
Okay.
Which is, it's free in this town. And they don't allow trucks on it.
Okay. Well, and we're do, and if Codde Street is approved, then it's the same thing for Codde Street, for instance.
Why can't, why can't we just say, you cannot go down East Street because of the safety factor? Do you not realize that East Street is not 106, it's not 18, it's not, it's not 104?
We know that.
There is a quarter-mile of sidewalk. There are no, no side things. You've gotta jump into the woods if something comes. I walk it all the time. I see people down there with baby characters.
The reason-
There's no reason, there's no place to go.
I'm not in disagreement with you. That's why we're having this-
Right.
Discussion right now.
Can we just, can you just say your name and add, I just want your name.
On William Cudde, I live at 297 East Street.
Thank you.
Why can't you just say, it's too dangerous? Those other streets have sidewalks, they, they have room.
And that's what we're here to-
You don't need an alternate route for East Street, it just should be disallowed that heavy trucks can go down there, period.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm pretty sure, given what the people who know more about this than I do, is that when you say you can't drive on this road, it is a public road, so we have to say, you can't drive on this road, you can drive on this road. I'm pretty sure that's just the rules.
Yes.
I don't write the rules, but as, as a board, we have to-
If I'm a truck driver and I can no longer take my shortcut, and that's all this comes down to, that I know that I can go 106, I know I can go 104, but I'd rather beat a couple of lights or beat the square, and that's why I go East Street.
Right, but-
Right.
But they're bombing down East Street, there's no room.
If we do a heavy truck exclusion, I, obviously, will start a warning, you know, and the truck, the signs go up, we get there several months from there. The signs go up, the police department knows there's a heavy truck exclusion, will have to start doing enforcement.
Yep.
You know, and that's not just true from our end.
Yep.
Bridgewater will have to be doing something similar on High Street.
Right.
And, you know, as someone mentioned, you get enough tickets and you start paying attention.
Right. I just, Paula, and then I'll come back to you, because-
I just wanted to say, we met with this gentleman, he came to, we have a track meeting on Wednesday.
This is Paula Wolf, she's town assessor.
Yes, assessor. We're on this track where it's all the departments that are concerned with things like this or might be affected by this. And Bridgewater Sand and Gravel, it was brought up the last one, and they have, they have grown so much, and they have huge contracts right now. One is in West Bridgewater, one, and they're not going to stop, you know, unfortunately, they are growing, growing, and-
That's fine, and that's why we have to step in.
I think Bridgewater is aware of this, but they're doing it the way they have to do it. This is what this gentleman is doing. Now he's reaching out to us, as long as we're not opposed to stopping them and being in agreement, you will see it. It's, it looks like it's a good thing that we're all working together and that this will, his recommendation will be the start from, or whatever the report says, but it was a very hopeful thing that they started, and, and that they paid for this study, because then that, that goes, and they're more affected because I think that, we all know where the trucks are coming from, basically, so.
Right. Did you want to add, what's your name and address?
I'm Sylvia Avril, 154 East Street, and I was just wanting to talk about quality of life that was mentioned earlier. When you're outside in the summer, you cannot talk to the person next to you. One routine day, I counted sixteen eighteen-wheelers in an hour. That's one a minute, a one every four, it's like I'm being on 24. And this is how, you know, and it's safety, and there's no peace in our neighborhood anymore. It's just so noisy, and, you know, things shake because the trucks are so large, and we, we'd just like some rest of it from that.
Thank you. Is there anybody that wants to add some, yes?
Amy Horton, 79 Whitman Street. I have concerns over the noise, much as you do. I live towards the Plymouth Street end. I was able to get the town to add a no engine brake sign, but no one seems to want to read it, and there's, the, the noise level is ridiculous. I work from home three days a week, soon to be full-time, and there's days when I can't hear the other person on the phone because it's just, it's like someone's outside my front door with a jackhammer, just, that's all you hear, eh, 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 eh. So my concern is if the traffic moves to Whitman Street, do we have any, I'm sorry, can we maybe toy with the speed limit? It's like a racetrack. It's, it's a straight shot. There's so many people whipping down there, down Whitman Street, whether it be a motorcycle, a truck, a car, doesn't matter what it is. It's just, it's noisy, and our sidewalks aren't the best either. So I think my concern is, if it does get diverted to Whitman Street, can we play around with the speed limit, possibly lower it? I believe if memory serves me correctly, the police said that the, the engine brake sign was not an enforceable sign, so it's great it's there, but no one pays attention to it. So what do we do now that we have a whole bunch more potentially heavy trucks coming down? It's not raining, it's not snowing, it's perfect weather out, and they're still using those brakes, and it's, it's maddening, so.
Charlie, are there options that we can put in place to-
I would normally say yes, in the sense of it might be a thickly settled area, in which case the board could have the power to reduce the speed limit, obviously talking to the chief and talking to John Haynes. My only asterisk on that is that it is a state route, and it's, and Mastot has jurisdiction. Doesn't mean it wouldn't happen, it's just I would want to check with Mastot to whether the board can unilaterally-
Right.
-make a decision to change the speed limit on a state route. I don't know that they can. But it's something that-
It's not as simple as us, like we've done in other neighborhoods where we have lowered the speed limit.
But it's something that the board-
We did one recently.
Something the board could consider.
Okay.
Can I provide some feedback?
Sure.
In that space? So as, as part of evaluating the alternative route, we would look at other means of potential mitigation, and understanding the increase in heavy vehicles is part of that.
Mm-hmm.
So that would be in our, that's part of the content that would be in our report. We could recommend signage, or update, or a speed study. Again, I agree that, you know, MassDOT has jurisdiction, and guidance on changing speed limit regulations, you know, includes like speeding, you know, taking existing speed measurements and understanding the existing geometric and controlling criteria. It's basically a separate process from what we're going through, but it could certainly be evaluated further, yeah.
I mean, I think, you know, we all recognize that, you know, Route 106 and East Street are different, you know, there's, 106 is wider, it has businesses, East Street is more residential. We know that, but we also don't want to create, you know, a, you know, undue hardship on the residents of Whitman Street or Plymouth Street, but like you said, we don't, it's not as simple as, as a local street for us.
Down 104 in Bridgewater.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, we don't want to shift a problem-
Yeah, I mean-
Just because it's-
They don't pay taxes on it.
We would, it would be nice if the town could say, no trucks on Whitman or Plymouth.
Right.
You can't.
But we can't.
It's one of the excl, one of the exceptions to the exclusion rule is, we cannot designate a state route as a truck exclusion, so that it will be up to that truck driver to make the decision whether it's more efficient for that truck to go down 18 to Spring to 104, or to go via Whitman and Plymouth, wherever they're going east, and then the same thing coming back the other direction. But we cannot exclude trucks on Whitman and Plymouth.
Did anybody else want to add any, yes?
So my name's Lino Sullivan, I live at 355 East Street, and I just wanted you to know, when my kids started school, they wanted them to walk down to Elmwood, and I had the police and the district out, and they actually said it is unsafe to walk on our street because we have no sidewalks. So now I, these kids are waiting out by the street, trucks are flying by, and we live by the Herepen Turn down by the, the town line. We've had people hit our telephone poles, we've had people run off the road all the time. It's crazy the way these trucks are speeding down the street. Someone is going to get hurt. I mean, the district and the police, we had the police sit in our driveway trying to stop them all the time. It's crazy the amount of traffic that's coming down the street now. Thank you.
John?
Yeah, John Cohen, 75 East Street. I'd like to thank the board for even bringing this up with consideration. I was notified by an email, thank God, just last week, or two weeks ago, when I came to the first meeting, and I guess this one was the bigger one. So, yeah, I've been on East Street for almost twenty-five years, me and my wife Donna, and as this young lady over here said, if you sit in your back porch, you, you really can't hear, you can't have a conversation. These trucks just barrel down the road, and I, and I feel bad for the people of Plymouth and Whitman Street, but that is the state road.
Yep.
East Street is one of the oldest roads in this community. It's the Elmwood section. Not that that's prestigious or anything, but it is one of the oldest areas, and, you know, the route, just, the road doesn't have the width, you know, and there's really nowhere to go with the width. But you've got houses, I know town, the town or the state could take some of your road, but that hasn't been a plan. And I'd really like to thank the town of Bridgewater for bringing this up. I know there was some guy on High Street who had a sign in his front yard, and I almost came out to talk to him one day.
He did.
But I'm like, oh, you know, you really don't want to talk to anybody you don't know, you don't know how, how redneck or whatever he may be.
Was it in support of the ban or the other, oh, okay.
Yeah, it was in support of the ban, and then all of a sudden I saw the sign on, and so I got the email, and I want to thank the town for sending that email. If I didn't see that email, I wouldn't be here today, and I'd like to thank the board for your consideration of eliminating these trucks off a residential road that really can't handle.
Okay. Jim, I see you, but this gentleman, you raised your hand. Did you have anything you wanted to add? No? Good?
You looking at me?
Yeah, I am, sorry. I thought you, go ahead, go ahead, Jim, and then, okay.
I suggested to John Haynes one night that he could cut his budget in half, and he looked at me like usual, and he said, how? And I said, just stop making signs. Nobody reads them. You could ask, you could run a survey on East Street of every car going down there, and not one person could tell you what the speed limit was. And there's three signs between Route 18 and the Herepen Turn.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
So my name is Bob Hopkins. I live at the corner of Elmwood Way and East Street. I have about 150 feet of frontage. Just to add to Fred's point about the bus stops and crossing the street, East Street is, doesn't really have any engineered drainage whatsoever, at least not in that section. No catch basins, no storm drains, and there's a puddle that makes itself well-known every time it rains right there, which makes it impossible for pedestrians to even use that, that section if it's raining out, because the cars going both ways are fighting for asphalt right there. So that's just one small spot of the street. The whole, the whole rest of the street is that way, and it's residential from 18 all the way to-
And I can just say, we've been there since 1998 when we moved in, and the amount of traffic is crazy now, and those trucks-
Yeah, it's increased exponentially.
I, I jog, and I didn't notice it until, it's gotten so bad. I stopped and talked to that guy with the sign, I saw the sign.
Did you?
Yeah, and I called, I called Bridgewater, I called East Bridgewater, called police, I didn't know what we could do about it, so I'm really happy that you guys are hopefully gonna do something.
So two and a half years ago, I'll just give you a little bit of comments on, two and a half years ago, they won a huge contract in Waltham. So their, this is, the police chief told me, and they were going to run strips down to, to take a measurement, had to be above seven percent, heard nothing back. So I called back after two months and said, no, it doesn't meet the criteria, but I got no explanation past that. So, and it was me, actually, and my old neighbor in Bill's house, that actually, actually got those strips put on, never got any feedback. And the one thing I'd like the, the survey and the gentleman from Bridgewater to do is to make sure that end route is Route 24. I doubt that the end route should be at 106 and 18. That makes no sense, and it biases that alternate route to go through East Bridgewater and not include Bridgewater.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have anything different to add at this point? I think, I, I don't mean that to sound like I don't care, I just mean, is there anything we haven't heard or that you want to make sure we understand?
Can we vote?
No, sorry. If you want to run for office, I'm up next year, so you know. Donna, yep?
Donna Cullen in 75 East Street. I, I, maybe I missed it, but during the snowstorms, any, any type of snow, once the plows come through, literally, I, I don't know what the width is, I mean, it, it's hard to even get two cars down the road in opposite directions sometimes, and the kids trying to get on the bus. I got yelled at for trying to shovel out the fire hydrant, he said I was gonna die out there one night during the storm. He's like, get inside, flashlights on the head. So during the snowstorms too is another consideration, because there's no sidewalks anyhow in a lot of the area, and just trying to get kids on buses or to even walk, you have to walk on the street, or people walking their dogs, they're in the middle of the road.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Kelly Regan, I live at 188 Whitman Street.
Sorry.
I think, I think we're all in agreement, it's whether, safety displacement where it's gonna go. Both neighborhoods are extremely busy. The end of Plymouth Street and Whitman Street, we've been there a short time and we've seen at least five accidents at that intersection at the red moving container. Same thing up at the light near the antique store. I guess my question for this gentleman is, what are the pros and cons of having that route displaced as opposed to staying in Bridgewater? So you're offering these routes as a course to displace, will that report offer, like, I guess what the pros and cons are of going this way or going through, not even touching East Bridgewater? So if there was anything up to offer about that?
Can you answer her?
Yes, so Mr. Sealy kind of answered the question a little bit earlier. Not all of the traffic that is being displaced from East Street, or from High Street and East Street, would conceivably go to Route 106. We're just proposing that as one of the alternative routes. It's potential that, you know, a heavy vehicle driver could put in their GPS and end up going through Bridgewater. We understand some challenges with that route, and that's kind of the idea why we're here today, is because to try to contain this route entirely within Bridgewater, it, it may, Mastot may not accept that. They may look at Route 106 and say, this is even more favorable of a route, and you need to go, you need to go talk to them. So we're trying to be proactive in that approach. To further answer that question, we could provide some sort of restriction on High Street that ends at the East Bridgewater town line. However, what we didn't want to see was heavy vehicles travel within the town of Bridgewater, get to a heavy vehicle exclusion that begins at a town line, and then have to turn around because all of a sudden there's sort of this no entry for heavy vehicle barrier. We wanted to make sure that there was an alternative route that made sense, and if we could take the proper precautions and propose mitigation to the alternative route. So it's not, it's, it's not necessarily trading one route for another, there's, there are alternative routes, but the primary route we believe would go through the town of East Bridgewater. Does that-
Does that answer your question? It doesn't mean that's what will happen, but it's a likelihood, I guess. All right. Anybody else with anything new that they want to add at this time? Did you have your hand up? No? Okay. Good? All right. Thank you all very much for your feedback and for being here. You know, obviously, we are gonna make some people happy and some people not happy, but it, it really helps us when we make decisions to know how it affects the people that we're making those decisions about. So thank you. I don't know if you want to vote tonight or if you want to wait. My mind is made up, and I don't, I don't want to assume that you guys are ready to do that.
No, I mean, I mean, makes sense, right? I mean, obviously, it doesn't, traffic doesn't belong there. Look, we, this board dealt with a couple of traffic situations. The first one was unaccepted roads. I'm not sure if you talked to anybody-
That's been fun.
-on some of the streets that, you know, when I first got on and they were like, well, our road's unaccepted, I had no idea what that meant. I'm like, what do you mean, it's not accepted? Well, you know, town doesn't accept in their private ways, really, at the end of the day. So you can imagine the struggle we had, but we, you know, did the work, got with the town council and Charlie Sealy, and, and were able to get to a town meeting after a period of time, too long, as far as I was concerned, but that period of time, and we got some of those roads accepted. Still got another bunch of roads to go about, but we know the process and we know how that takes care of the situation. Situation like this comes up, you know, I live on Central Street, so does Carol, we don't see much action, I don't go down East Street very often unless I'm cutting through.
I'll know for lunch someday.
What do we have?
Right. So, but to that point, you know, when I don't know something, I make a phone call, right? And I think there's a couple people in here that I talk to, just to find out what, what the real problems were in that area. And I, you know, I'm sure Carol and David did the same thing, they reach out to the people, residents that we know, we have some comfort with to understand. So yeah, there's a problem, we don't want to create any bigger problems for other residents in other streets. So I guess what I'm saying is, you know, when the report does come out and some conclusions are made, I think we still have some input, and we still have the ability to get with some of the streets that they're angling towards and find ways to, to make that happen. And I think if you pick up and talk to the people in Roland Hills, you talk to the people in some of these other roads that we worked with for over a two-year period, I think they'll tell you the same thing, that, you know, we're, we're gonna be in everybody's corner, but for right now, East Street needs to get these trucks off that road, definitely.
Is that a yes?
Well, we, we-
We're gonna make a motion. We're gonna make a motion.
Would you like to make, do you have anything you want to say before you make the motion?
No, I just want, you know, go along with what Peter said here. I've spent the last couple of weeks going down East Street quite a bit. Everything you're saying is correct.
I hope you weren't speeding.
I was. I just wanted to see if I could get a-
A ticket? Did you get a ticket?
No. I turned it over to Charlie. No, but, seriously, the, the 18-wheelers, I know they have a job to do, that's their livelihood, all the stuff that goes with it, but they're gonna take the, most likely the road that the company tells them to take, and that's gonna be the road. But I agree, East Street should not, and, and again, we've said all along, we can put all the signs up, everything we want, you'll still see some 18-wheelers down there if we make that vote, but let, let's go for it, let's, let's follow that motion that Peter's gonna make, and let's get them off East Street and see what we can do. We know we're not making everyone happy, we apologize for that, but that's the best we can do.
You really want to see some fun when there's a funeral at the cemetery.
Oh, my God.
And you got four or five trucks backing up while they're trying to get into the cemetery.
I've been there.
I was gonna say, I bet you have.
I've been there, I work for Funeral Home, I've been there.
All right, yeah, I can make a motion.
Make a motion.
Charlie, I mean, I mean, I can just wing it here, or is there something that, um-
I think you can, do you need specific language?
Right.
The board should vote in favor of having a heavy truck exclusion on-
Yeah, I can, I can just fill in.
-Hayward and High Street, obviously contingent upon the results of the study and approval from the town of Bridgewater.
Correct. Yes.
As stated.
What Charlie said, and I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Please, no.
Are you none, all in favor of approving the heavy vehicle truck exclusion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There you go. Now we wait, because this is government. But thank you all so much for being here, and thank you for being down at Bridgewater and keep us listed. Well, we made some people happy. Not everybody.
Uh-oh.
Is this your relative?
Yes.
But they threw you right under that 18-wheel, didn't they?
I, I was warned about that early.
I mean, you're a part of a great team.
Thank you, but they just, you can't hear a thing.
Well, we already did the traffic counts.
So that was, that was kind of the major hurdle. The town of Bridgewater okayed the traffic counts, so we got those in hand.
Oh, great.
So I'll just, I'll let the town of Bridgewater know, we'll proceed with our study, we'll do our site visits, do pictures, do all the inventory-
Nice sweatshirt.
Love the bicentennial swag. Awesome.
And we'll probably need a letter at some point, you know, once the report's acceptable. I'm not sure where that falls in the process, but, you know, we'll just-
We're available.
-move in with the report and we'll, we'll go from there.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. We got some action items.
Action.
That was a big action item.
Uh-huh. Uh, let's see, let's jump in here. Approve the minutes of the November 13th, 2023 Select Board Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Prove but not release the minutes of the November 13th, 2023 Select Board Executive Session Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Release minutes of the following Select Board Executive Session Meetings, Monday, May 23rd, 2022, Monday, November 28th, 2022, Monday, September 12th, 2022, Monday, September 25th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discuss and potentially vote for the EB Democratic Committee to place a rubber bin at Town Hall for a food drive the week of January 22nd, 2024.
Second.
I know Amanda's here, so do you want to come down and-
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Of course.
Thank you. I'm sorry this didn't get to you earlier, but this is a draft flyer.
Okay.
Thank you for considering this.
Yep.
I don't know if anyone would like one. There's one more. They're in color, so I had to do only a few.
Right?
But yeah, so I'm Amanda Coligan, I'm the co-chair of the Democratic Town Committee. We are interested in doing a post-holiday food drive. We know that generally our food pantries, who right now are in dire need, more than before, of donations, that we know that, you know, everyone has leftover, or a lot of folks have leftovers after the holidays, and we're hopeful to kind of capitalize on that and continue to support our food pantries after the holidays. So we're hoping to just put a bucket here for that week, collect it, and then we will donate it to the Union Congregational Food Pantry at the end of the week.
Great. And I think too, it's so important, because the food pantries really get depleted over the holidays.
Exactly.
They give out so much, so it's nice to, you know, have this timing be to try to stock them again.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Great.
Good idea.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you for doing this.
Yeah, of course.
Discuss and potentially vote on the request from National Grid for the town to take overpayment of a streetlight located on Patriot Circle.
Second for discussion.
Discussion.
It's definitely ours.
You know more?
It's our street now, it was accepted and the property deeds were filed and everything, and we should, since the streetlights were put in as part of the plan approved by the planning board back before it was built, then we should take it over and pay for it.
Okay. But is this the one that was decorative?
I don't know, even if it is-
It doesn't, that doesn't impact us taking it over. Okay. All right. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The reason is that, I was, because we accepted all those streets that Peter mentioned back in May, one of the things we didn't do was go out and survey the streets to label all the streetlights and come up with, so I was doing that both last week and this week. A lot of those are the decorative posts-
Yep.
-rather than the overhanging ones, and we're gonna have to take over those also, so.
Who's been paying for them?
I, in some cases, the bulbs aren't even there.
Okay. Well, let's not ask about it then.
I'll make a motion for the Select Board 2024 Meeting Schedule as posted here.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proven date and schedule for May 13th, 2024 Annual and Special Town Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Charlie?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve to open the May 13th, 2024 Annual and Special Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have one additional one, Chair, let's see, approve of the request from Melody Seale of the Christmas Parade Committee for the use of the town common and town hall parking lot for the annual Christmas parade on December 2nd, 2023 from 7:00 a.m. till 3:00 p.m.
Second.
Good thing she got that in. It could have been a break. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could you remind Peter there's a parade on Saturday?
There's a parade on Saturday, we're marching. Although I hear there's a train, if we want to ride a train instead.
I don't know if they got the money for it.
Nope. Quinn's already asked me.
We're, we're wearing our bicentennial sweatshirts.
It might be cold.
So what?
I'm wearing a coat over it.
Suck it up.
Okay. Merry Christmasy. Is that it?
That's it, that's all I've got.
Sir?
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Moving right along. Announcements? Rebecca, anything? I don't have any. You just don't want to talk. Charlie?
Sure, a few things. And some, none of these things the board's aware of, it's more for our studio or outside audience. Yeah, obviously, back in October, the town meeting approved the appropriation for the central school building project in terms of doing a feasibility study and schematic work. The board may start hearing from people saying, well, what's going on? Why hasn't the building been built? Or something happened, whatever.
Hurry up and wait. It's the building.
Why is it still sitting there?
The committee is holding monthly meetings, and it's organized subcommittees, including one for the selection of an owner's project manager, which is required both by the MSBA but also by, let's say, procurement laws, touring committee to look at other projects in the area that are similar, communications committee to get the word out, and everything like that. We can't even start the process of hiring an owner's project manager until the MSBA allows us to do so, in the sense of the, having sent all the information, such as the approval from town meeting, to the MSBA, we're scheduled to be on the agenda for February 28th, which is still obviously three months away, and because the deadline for us submitting was the, gonna be the end of December, but we obviously submitted everything early, but they go by their schedule. So, we have to sit and wait until they make that approval on the 28th, in which case then we start from the process, doing the advertising and everything like that. We're certainly hoping to move forward with all due speed, you know, meeting the requirements of the MSBA and such. But it's gonna take some time. I don't think we're going to have anything substantial, for instance, that we're gonna be able to bring to Town Meeting in May. Possibly we'll have hired an OPM by then. I would like to hope we have. But even that may require approval from the MSBA. So, but just, so the townspeople understand that it is moving forward as fast as we can, but we, it's, we're playing Mother May I with MSBA at this point. North Bedford Street Sewer Project, similarly, in this case, it's the Federalist that we're dealing with. It's nice to get the $3 million. It's wonderful. But that comes with all those strings that come with it, which include various approvals from them. So, they have to review, for instance, the language of all the easements and all the plans and everything like that. That will take weeks, if not months, for that to happen. Because of that, when we were, a few months ago, we were aiming to get groundbreaking, let's say in January of 2024. It's more looking like April at this point. So, again, if people are wondering, "Well, what's taking so long?" We got the money. You know, we're gonna be getting the money. But, you know, we're gonna have to get permissions and approvals from the federal government as part of that.
Peter, it's gonna be a slow process.
Yeah, right.
I'm sure you're shocked to hear that.
We did get a little bit of money for a downtown sewer study. It's one of the grant applications we have sent in for the One Stop for Growth. We're gonna need to get an engineering firm, but with a little bit of marketing or planning sort of as a sideline in that. The idea is, and we talked about this back when I started, was could we extend a line from where it is right now on Bedford Street north up to the town center and bring sewer to that area? And how many properties we might be able to do and how many gallons we might be able to do, where we could put the line? Because obviously, as we did with North Bedford Street, it's a lot easier putting it in where we're not interfering with the actual right-of-way of Route 18. But the whole concept is we'd like to see if we can further develop some of those properties in that area. But they may require to get sewer to do that. So, that's what the focus of the study's gonna be. In connection with that, the Brownfield application failed again. What I basically was told is
Perpetually.
Brownfield, the Brownfield program will not pay for the demolition of the building. I thought it, I had gotten a clue a year ago that they would, but they're telling me no. We might be able in another year to do site, to file a grant for site prep work, which does include demolition. But there are a number of things that are gonna, they're probably gonna be looking for a much more substantial town match if we want it. And this was an $800,000 or $900,000 project. You know, I put, I got money from Town Mean, but it was a small amount, just to show sort of good faith. But we're gonna need to, if either, whether we get a grant or not, the town's gonna have to make a decision whether it's enough of a priority for the, to try and get the precise engineering site cleaned up to spend our own money on it rather than waiting for the state or the federal government. We may, you know, EPA grants may be a possibility also. In connection with all that, I can't, you know, wave my hands and say, "Well, we might do housing, or we might do commercial, or it might be a mix, or it might be..." We're gonna, you know, the board's gonna have to work with the planning board a little bit more as to what do we actually see happening with that parcel? And so, you know, it does have to be definitive that we have a, you know, a developer online, ready to go. But we have to think a little bit, we have to have something more definitive that the state will say, "Okay, they've got something in mind specifically rather than just cleaning up the property." Because they want to see something, whether it's jobs or housing or both, that will occur because that property gets cleaned up. They're not just gonna give us money and say, "Okay, fine," and not worry about what happens after that. We don't have to worry about tomorrow or next week. But in terms of applying for a grant a year from now or applying for an EP grant at some point, those are things that are gonna have to be considered. Open space plan stats, that also meant that we only got one of the three grants that we applied for. We didn't get an open space plan grant. There's a possibility a year, again, another year from now, we could, as we did for the ADA Self-Evaluation Transition Plan Grant, we could apply for, through the community compact, funding for open space. So, that's still on the burner, but just, we'll have to wait. The Route 18 corridor study, that's been completed by OCPC. It had obviously all sorts of recommendations for our intersections here at East Bridgewater. East-West Route 18 is one of those. You know, of course, Highland is, the central area where, is one. We know, as Peter would be the first to say, "Everything's gonna take too long." And it is. Even though both East-West and Highland are on Mast Dot's project list, it might be 10 or 15 years before we see anything occur. What I'm hoping for is we can work with OCPC and with Mast Dot and have a sit-down with town officials and such and so. Are there incremental changes we can make? We're not gonna move up on the list dramatically unless we start having a large number of crashes at those areas. Forbid we want that. But, you know, we've talked about, can we change the signaling, for instance, at East-West and Route 18? So, there's a left-hand lane turn only, or a left-hand turn signal. So, would that help, even though we don't change anything else physically, as an example? Are there ways we can improve sidewalks on Route 18, as an example? But whether it's this coming month or maybe in January, see if we can arrange to have everybody here who has an interest to talk about whether Mast Dot is willing to do some incremental work. Or, you know, even if it's on the town's dime, would they be accepting of the town doing incremental work towards the larger project so that we can go back to our residents and constituents and say, "It's not everything, but we've gotten something done at those intersections. We've got something done on Route 18." Lastly, library portraits. The library would like to donate three portraits. One of Judge Benjamin Winslow Harris, one of Samuel Angier Grandi, and then one of Bass Otis, that they could be installed at Town Hall. The Judge Harris portrait has a good frame and plaque, but the other two paintings need some restoration help. This is from Jessica.
Do we have to vote to accept those or anything, or is it just
Well, yeah. Oh, right. Yes, the grant ones, yes. Yes. Yeah, I think, you know, I'm not gonna accept them from Jessica unless the board's willing to take them in. I'm not, I don't have any plans of where to
And the trustees would have to
Well, I think Jessica's Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Second motion to accept them.
Yeah, we'll take some artwork. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also, let's see, we did get two grants. Thank you, Rebecca. One is Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance. This is for $43,200 for the Police Department. I don't have the specifics of exactly how that money's gonna be used, but obviously, it's going to the East Bridgewater Police Department. And then also, there was a special carve-out for movie theaters as part of the state grant packages. And in fact, our cinemas here were awarded a grant through the movie theater grant program. The total, not for East Bridgewater, but we were able to make $3 million available so that this will help, I would hope, either finance operating costs or finance capital costs over there at East Bridgewater Cinemas.
Great.
So, congratulations to them.
Was that $60,000 for them?
The letter, the letter from the state doesn't specifically mention how much money. It may be something like that.
Okay, I thought I had
I'm glad that they're still there and I want to see them succeed. It's good for the town. It's nice to be able to go to movies five minutes from home. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Board discussions? I mean, there's nothing going on this week. I don't know what we could talk about. Go ahead.
As we wind down 2023 in our bicentennial year, this Thursday at the tree lighting on the Common at 6:30. Right after that, and we have a brand-new tree out there. And right after that, we're going to open up Town Hall again.